Are these working? Are these working?
Hello, hello, hello.
Testing, testing. I think you just have to talk in.
All right, let's go ahead and play.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The district mission is to foster a positive, nurturing, and safe environment to inspire and support ongoing learning and the development of individuals as productive members of the society. We understand that our community is diverse and will respect and appreciate the opinions of all community members. At the same time, we must be able to conduct our meeting in an orderly fashion. Our expectation at all board meetings is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. In the event that anyone is disruptive and interferes with the meeting, they will be asked to leave. If they do not leave, we will request that law enforcement assist them in the process. And I also would like everybody to know that this board meeting is recorded and the video is shown on public television, just so you know that. Okay? Roll call, please. Mr. Ramsler?
Here.
Mr. Daffler?
Here.
Ms. Gitter?
Here.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
Mr. Tobine?
Present.
Bob Blessing?
Present.
Mr. Holman?
Here.
Thank you. The public will be given the opportunity for comments at the end of the board meeting. Each person addressing the board shall give his or her name and address. Each person is allocated three minutes to speak until a total time of thirty minutes is used up. We will give E give a thirty-second warning so speakers know when, excuse me, when their three minutes is up. During public participation, each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole. Consistent with our policy, this is not a time to question the individual board members or the district employees. As a reminder, our expectation at all board meetings is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. We will not tolerate profanity, frivolous, repetitive, or harassing statements. That said, did anyone turn in a green G? No, no green G. Okay, so there will be no public speaking at the end. I have a motion to adopt the agenda of October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda for October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
And I'm going to go through several, and I will ask for a motion now, and then I will ask for roll call at the end, okay? Roberts, Roberts meeting. All right. Next, the approval of the minutes for a regular board meeting held on September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and a special board meeting session on October fifth of twenty-twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
I have a question. In H, don't we just do it all together at once, A through G? Or are we doing it individually?
I am, but I'm doing it this way because if there's anyone that wants to discuss it, I want them to say ahead of it. We're filing Roberts' meeting if we're going to do this. Um, E is the approval of financial report, September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Motion.
I'll move for the financial report, September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
My second.
Thank you. Would anybody like to discuss this?
I had a conversation with Ann earlier today. The financial report, you know, every month it comes in and just kind of tracks where we're at spending-wise. And the current report, the first portion of that is related to the May forecast. And so it compares the actual numbers that are coming in to what was forecasted in May. And as I mentioned to Ann, we've had some changes with state funding. Now that they've implemented the new funding formula, we've actually got more revenue than was expected. We're still tracking to operate at a deficit, but hopefully we're going to shrink that deficit for the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No, just thank you, Justin, for answering all my questions today. I appreciate it.
Okay, next we'll get to F, recognition of staff and students. District Student of the Month.
Ava is not here this evening, so.
Thank you.
Go ahead and read it now.
Sure, I'm going to give her presentation. I'm going to go over to high school next week and present her medallion. So we could definitely recognize her this evening. That'd be great.
The Myhamsburg Schools' September District Student of the Month is Myhamsburg High School senior Ava Stevens. Ava was nominated by Myhamsburg High School Assistant Principal, Mr. Jeremy Sailor. Mr. Sailor said that Myhamsburg High School is proud to select Ava Stevens as the September Student of the Month. Ava is a servant student, leader in the way that she interacts with the staff and students at Myhamsburg High School. She is active participant in our school community and embodies what it means to have a sense of belonging that other students should aspire to hold. Ava is involved in athletics as a varsity captain of the Myhamsburg Vikings volleyball team. She enjoys passing her love of game of coaching in the Myhamsburg Youth League. Ava is also a member of the Principal Advisory Council, Media Arts Tech Program, and a freshman mentor. She is currently helping school administrators to create and implement a restorative practices peer group at Myhamsburg High School. Ava demonstrates our burg behavior in her daily interactions with others and in mentoring others to follow her lead. Ava is involved in the youth life, Christ-centered ministry that helps young people know Jesus, grow in their faith, and serve Him. She is constantly learning and growing in her faith. Ava Stevens loves reading and hiking with friends. She plans to attend a four-year college majoring in criminal sociology. It is with great pride that we celebrate Ava Stevens as Myhamsburg High School Student of the Month for September.
Wow. It's nice to have students that are role models, isn't it?
That it is.
Thank you. Next, we will, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the meeting opening items A through G. Motion, please.
I move to approve items A through G. My second.
Nyla got it.
Okay, we had a first from Ms. Neese, a second from Ms. Gitter. Okay. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
We have some other presentations besides student of the month. I think Mr. Newbauer has a presentation.
I'm sorry, Bob. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Bob Newbauer. Mr. Black had asked me to come and share a little bit about a program going on at the high school. And Mrs. Moore asked me to share a little bit about what we're doing. So we're going to just kind of combine the two because it's really all related to workforce development and career exploration. So I'll kind of start with at the high school. We implemented a program this year called the CAP program. We partnered with two people out of Alluring Glass. They started a nonprofit called CAP, which is Conduit Apprenticeship Program. Their goal was to go ahead and take career trade opportunities to high school students. So we have already begun that process. We had picked about twenty-three students to start the program. They have already gone through three weeks' worth of workshop where they did hands-on learning. Those workshops were run by all volunteers. So local businessmen and women in the trades came and met both one-on-one with students and as a group to provide this workshop opportunity. They all created, there was kind of, kind of a platform they had to follow where they had to go through and use various tools and be able to identify things. And it was great because the volunteers, I felt like, were as engaged as the students were. It was really a great opportunity, one of them being a graduate, Brandon Pascoe, who owns a local company here. He came back to volunteer, and it was just a really good opportunity. We had people from Alluring Glass, from Zengel Remodeling, from Next Step Remodeling, and Remodeling Design. And so students got to work through that, that workshop, getting the hands-on experience. But then they also got kind of one-on-one mentoring, which involved employability skills. So these were business owners that sat there and said, this is what I'm looking for when I want to hire you in a few years. This is what I would expect out of you. And they related, they said CAP, in their mind, also stands for being coachable, being attentive, and being a problem solver. And so they said, these are things you could practice right now here at the high school to make yourself a better employee as you get into the workforce. And so the program doesn't end at the end of the workshop. They now start coming back on a monthly basis, having lunch with those students, providing those employability skill reminders, checking in on their grades, truly being a mentor. And with the goal being, as those students are hired into the trades, they will continue to be their mentor once they're in the trade field. So they have someone else they can go to and look up to. They have kind of identified three or four students that they feel could be a potential intern for them. So we have already met with Soshi, and Soshi is going to act as a, almost like a temp agency and post an internship position. And they will, these students that have been through the program already will have the opportunity to have a part-time internship and get experience, not just from one company, but all of those companies. So they're willing to share an employee, and it is a paid internship. Then, once that paid internship is complete and the student graduates, they have the opportunity to work into a full-time position in one of these companies and then come back next year and be one of the leaders in the workshop. So now we have students recognizing students that they went to class with. So it's a really good program. We're very excited about it. In addition to that, we're also continuing with our Manufacturing Day trips. We took students to two or three different locations this year, one of those being Resonetics. What I liked about that is students had the opportunity not only to tour the facility, but meet with all aspects of the company. They met with HR, they met with marketing, they met with tool design, they met with engineers. And they got to see how all of those positions interact with one another. And the HR director flat-out said, are any of you thinking about going to school for business? Couple of the students were. And they said, why would you not let us hire you right out of high school? You learn the business that we have here, and then we will pay for you to go back to school and learn accounting or become an engineer. And so it was really a good opportunity, something that we shared with the students a lot, but it was good for them to hear from an actual HR director and a CEO. We also have had students attend Sinclair already this year, looking at their advanced manufacturing programs. Just yesterday, I went to Columbus. I've been asked to be part of what's called Amp It Up. It's a statewide organization, or statewide committee. There's five people from Montgomery County that have been selected to go, and they're going to create pathways for high school students to enter advanced manufacturing, information technology positions, and telecommunications positions. So we're lucky that as a district, we're going to be on the ground level of being able to create some of those pathways to get our students directly into the workforce. We have, Stacy has been working with several local companies. I know we have groups going Yakisawa, not too far off in the future. And it's nice because we have some students that have gone to some of these trips that may be seniors and not sure what comes next. And we have other students who know they want to be engineers or know they want to work in robotics. And so all of these things kind of interrelate with one another, and they have the opportunity to really get some good experience and see what's out there. This will be the first year that all fifth graders, all eighth graders, and all tenth graders get to tour the Miami Valley CTC. We've had students tour during their tenth grade year, and what we found is sometimes they have this excitement, but they're a little bit behind the eight ball, maybe on credits or grades. So now this gives them the opportunity to start being exposed to things a little bit earlier. I know Mrs. Hall took a group of fifth graders last year, and they absolutely loved it. So we're expanding that on to all fifth graders. We'll get a chance to see that next year, or this year. We will continue with our business advisory meetings. Obviously, our tech prep programs are continuing to meet and collaborate with real-world employers. And in addition to that, we had a seventh-grade group in the past go to a really good career days. Unfortunately, we're not able to do that this year. So Stacy kind of looked at me and said, we're going to create our own. And so we've partnered with the county, and we're putting on something we think will actually be better because it'll be our local businesses, not just Dayton area. And I think it's going to be a great opportunity for our students to really see all the wonderful things that are out there. So, and the thing, we're kind of, in addition to all that, we still have college visits. We still have all of those things going on. We just want to make sure that students know that apprenticeships are options, that trade schools are options, and that even going to work and letting their company send them off to school is a great option for them. And that no one pathway is better than another pathway. It's the one that's going to make sense to them. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Newbauer. Appreciate it. Any questions?
Not yet. I think it's great exposure. Good stuff.
Maybe sometime in the future, after those fifth graders go there, if one or two of them want to come in and just, you know, express how things went and all that, I think it would be kind of neat. Next, we'll move on to the National Schools Psychology Week. It's recommended that the Board of Education recognize National Schools Psychology Week, which is November sixth or the tenth of twenty-twenty-three. This year's theme is "Let's Grow Together: Inspired by the Importance of Both Personal and Shared Strengths in Our Growth as Individuals in School Communities in Every Season of Life." The theme recognizes every aspect of growth as fundamental to effective learning environments and to school psychologists' role in supporting student well-being and learning. Anyone want to comment? Okay. Next, we'll move on to board discussion. Student Board of Education representative.
Well, actually, I think Justin wants to go first.
You want to go first?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Everybody always likes watching me try to present stuff. So to kind of preface, next month I'll be presenting the November forecast. And since there's been a lot of discussion about the reappraisals recently and possible changes in legislation, I thought it might be good to put some of this information out there so that when I go into the forecast, we can have a better understanding of how this is going to impact the district. And I'm just working through some exposure there to be to start presenting more so that it doesn't bother me as much, I guess. The first kind of slide up there just goes through how your actual taxes are calculated. So a home value is assessed at thirty-five percent. So whatever your home has been reappraised at under this current reappraisal, thirty-five percent of that is what gets applied to taxes. So they multiply that by the effective tax millage rate. And one mil represents one dollar of tax for every thousand dollars in assessed value. So this little graphic can just kind of demonstrate how the tax bill is calculated for you. So you have the home value assessed at thirty-five percent, multiply effective tax rate. That gives you the initial bill, and then if there are any rollbacks, homestead, there's a few other ones, then that would be taken off of that, and then you would have your final bill. So the next little piece here, just worked through an example, and on this I tried to use just to base, you know, a hundred thousand dollars for ease of calculation. And then that forty-three point one-four-one-one-nine-nine is the effective millage rate that Myhamsburg is currently looking at for our district. So in just using that, all I did was take out that last slide, plug in those numbers to kind of show, hey, this is what it looks like if you're going to calculate a tax bill.
So we could all do ours right now?
Yeah, you could all do your own with that. So this slide here kind of gives information because, as you know, Myhamsburg is on the twenty-mil floor, and we're the only district in Montgomery County to be on the floor. We got onto the floor in twenty-twenty. But it's extremely confusing to understand which levies actually apply to the floor. So I think that's why initially people thought if the valuation of your home goes up thirty percent, then your tax bill is going to go up thirty percent. But it doesn't actually work. It's not a one-to-one in that way. So the box on the far left, the inside millage, the municipality can levy up to ten mils without taking that to a vote. And then they kind of divide that up amongst just different organizations. So the library gets some, the school gets some, and the school gets four point two-two mils. And so that inside millage counts towards the millage floor. Fixed-rate levies would also count towards the millage floor. So kind of a combination between any fixed-rate levies that you would have along with the inside millage, that calculates your twenty, that's what all gets calculated into the twenty-mil floor. So if you've got thirty mils in total and there's a reappraisal, they will adjust the millage back on the fixed-rate levies until it hits that floor. And so that's what we saw. Fixed-sum levies, there is no floor, so they're not calculated in that. So with a fixed-sum levy, such as the substitute levy in twenty-twenty-two that got passed, that was a fixed-dollar amount levy. So the millage on that will continue to be rolled back, given these new appraisals. That kind of makes sense so far, that not all the levies are going to be impacted by the twenty-mil floor. So the next slide there, that's just kind of telling you that, you know, as property values increase, tax rates, the rate itself is oftentimes adjusted downward. And so the revenue for schools tends to be pretty stagnant, which is why you oftentimes see kind of like the staircase model of going for a levy, and that covers expenses for a while. But then as inflation starts to surpass the money that you're bringing in, it's time to raise new money. And if you go to the next piece here, so it might be kind of hard to see from the big screen, but that red box is showing which levies are applied to the twenty-mil floor. Like, why we're on the twenty-mil floor is due to those three specific levies. So it's the inside millage, and then you have three fixed rate, three fixed-rate levies. One was in nineteen-seventy-six, another one was nineteen-seventy-seven, and then the third one was nineteen-eighty-one. So that's the last time that those, that the district passed fixed-rate levies. Now, those have been made continuing, so the school's been receiving revenue from those since that time. And the rate gets reduced by a deduction factor that the county auditor comes up with when they take into account every time there's a new reappraisal and home values go up. In twenty-twenty, Myhamsburg hit the floor, and so those specific levies cannot be rolled back any further. So when there's a reappraisal and there's an increase in value, those levies, along with the inside millage, is where the increase would come from. So again, it's not, it's not all levies, and that's why it's not a one-to-one where if your home value increased by thirty percent, your tax bill is not going to increase by thirty percent. When I had a conversation with the auditors, because legislation is possibly changing soon, they didn't want to give me any specific numbers, but they said, kind of like, as an average to think about is a lot of people who might see a thirty-two percent increase in their home value may see somewhere around a ten to twelve percent increase in their tax bill. And somebody who had an assessed value more than that might see more, and somebody with lesser value might see less. So, but they don't have exact numbers, and they don't want to give any of that out yet either until they know what's going to happen. So the next, okay, so then this graphic here just kind of shows what's going on with Myhamsburg's levies and the effective tax rate for those. So the red line there represents a twenty-mil floor. And you can see that that dark gray line that kind of fades into the red line, those are those fixed-rate levies that you have that have been rolled back, rolled back. And then in twenty-twenty, they couldn't be rolled back any further. But you can look at that dark green line up at the top. It continues to decrease because that's the fully voted millage rate. So you can see that even after in twenty-twenty hitting the twenty-mil floor, that the millage rate has been continued to be rolled back on the levies that were voter-passed that do not apply to the twenty-mil floor. And the next one here, so this represents total revenue and local real estate revenue. So you can see there was a slight increase in twenty-twenty from those levies that hit the floor as property values went up. The effective rate applied by those levies allowed us to receive a little bit more revenue. But before that, you can see it was pretty consistent. Yeah. All right, and so this, I thought, was good to kind of bring up and show. On the left-hand side there, it is showing the average annual growth in local property tax and the growth in revenue. Those are those two smaller bars, and then the large black bar represents a ten-year historical average of inflation. So then on the right-hand side, again, it shows like a projection of revenue and annual growth in local property tax as compared to inflation. And what you can see is that historically and looking towards the future, inflation continues to outpace the revenue growth. And so that's what we see is our expenses as a school continue to go up, and the revenue that we bring in, even when we have these big reappraisals, doesn't quite track with how much things cost. Okay, so then this kind of breaks down, the pie chart there on the right-hand side is just looking at the resident property owner's portion of district funding. And then the larger portion there takes into account state and federal aid, but also business taxes and other revenue sources. And the bar over to the left-hand side is the daily cost per pupil, and that's at seventy-six dollars. So I thought that that was important to kind of throw out there, that for seventy-six dollars a day, we're picking students up and transporting them to a safe environment, staffed by highly-trained professionals, providing great value to the community. This is some of the numbers that I've currently plugged in to the November forecast, and I've been instructed that the best thing to do is to just go based off of what we have available to us now. And with my discussion with the auditors, we could be looking at a twenty-two percent overall revenue increase. And so that's the numbers that I've got highlighted in the box there. That's the most recent information. So that's going to adjust, and unfortunately, the November forecast is due in November, and then the county auditor is going to send me what they estimate we're going to receive in tax funds in December. So obviously, once I get that, I'll update the board and make you aware of any changes that I've made. And all of these changes are kind of tied to the legislation that's been proposed, House Bill one-eighty-seven. It's just looking at trying to ease the impact of tax increases on taxpayers. And so what they're proposing is to look at a three-year average, looking back at home sales and using that as the assessed value, I'm sorry, as the appraised value, taking a three-year average. And so then from that, like I mentioned in that first slide, thirty-five percent is what would be assessed for tax purposes. So kind of the way it was explained to me was that over a six-year period, the district could see that twenty-two percent revenue that I just had mentioned a little bit ago. But they would look to try and stretch it out. So in the first three years, they're going to average home values. And then in twenty-twenty-six, they would go back to looking at just what home values were selling at in twenty-twenty-five. So, you know, I wanted to make you aware of that, but in six years, it's likely that as this goes through, something else is going to change. So I wouldn't want us to count on six years down the road having the same funding that they're saying we could get right now. There's a worse option. Uh, there's a worse option, and the County Auditor Association had proposed, um, that they just cap off, uh, at an inflation rate, the revenue growth that anybody could collect, and that would be at seven-one percent. So regardless of what change, they would only allow, um, you to collect seven-one percent in increase in revenue from year to year versus right now, I'm projecting a twenty-two percent. And if House Bill one eighty-seven goes into effect, that could roll back to thirteen percent, which is a pretty drastic decrease, but it's not as bad as seven-one percent would be. And under the House Bill one eighty-seven, our state funding would adjust to try and help compensate a little bit for that loss, whereas with the county auditor proposal, um, it would not. And that's all I have.
Thank you. That was excellent. Very proud of you. Justin, where's that point zero four three nine factor come in? At the very first slide.
So was that the one where I was calculating? So that's taking the total effective millage is forty-three point one one whatever. And then when you, uh, because one mil is equal to one dollar for every thousand dollars of assessed value, you're just backing that decimal point up.
Okay. Um, I, I did meet with, um, Carl Keith, uh, in whenever some of this stuff too. And, uh, he, he was, he was, uh, reluctant to come up with very many numbers as far as percentages, but he did, he did say he thinks that is, that on the, there's going to be an average of somewhere between two and six percent increase. That was his personal opinion because he didn't feel like that, um, people were going to keep, keep them, uh, they'd be, people would be rioting. Basically, if this happens where people, you know, can't pick, if you're a, on a retirement, uh, living, you know, and living on a retirement. Also, something else that's, that could be bad is they're talking about removing the COV slowly, which that means that farmers would be paying a whole lot more money, uh, in taxes because of their land. Because right now, I, I can tell you, my farm is in, it's in the COV. And, uh, when it was residential, the taxes were about fifteen thousand dollars a year. And this was twenty years ago. And, uh, they, they dropped down, they're now around nine because of the COV. So, you know, that's a, that's a big difference. But they, but you have to farm the land and use it. So, but anyway, that's, that's kind of interesting. And I, I just think that, uh, I hope he's right about the two to four percent, um, because people, the inflation is, we, we can't keep, we can't keep, uh, living on, and I'm talking about the school, not, not personal. The school can't keep living on, uh, the amount of money that we're getting and continue to, to, uh, have quality teachers and the numbers of teachers and people to clean the buildings. And I mean, it just goes on and on and on. So, uh, yeah, you know, uh, we, we haven't really asked the people for an increase, uh, in a long time. So I don't know, you know, with this and with inflation, you know, everybody in here knows that when you go to the grocery store, it's unbelievable when you see, you know, the double, the double of prices that it was two or three years ago. So, and that's what the school's paying too, you know, for us to be able to just exist as a school. We're, we're outrageous, uh, for the kids of supplies and that kind of thing too. So, okay, I'm done. Now we can move to the Student Board of Education representative.
Sure. Just a continuation from last month. If there's any dialogue or discussion the board wants to talk about in terms of how we want to elect someone, select someone in terms of having student representation on the board. So I know, Anne, what you were going to speak to someone from Centerville, correct?
Yeah, I didn't get to just because of other situations, but, um, no, I just feel like we would need some sort of application. And I, I would like to see more than one representative.
I know, um,
Student-wise, Anne?
Many, many years ago.
Student-wise?
Yeah, student-wise.
Um, we, we had student representatives, um, and that was a long time ago, but, uh, we had the, um, I believe it was the president of the student body was, uh, asked first and, um, they always accepted. And then the junior, junior, uh, student body, not student body, the junior class president because the, the, the senior class president would be going, be going out. Uh, so if the people, you know, we felt like that, that if you did use a junior class president, uh, that worked out pretty well. Um, because they always wanted to do it. I mean, you know, it was, they considered it an honor to be able to come to the board meeting and sit where you guys are at. Yeah.
That was going to be my suggestion to present maybe to the student council, to see if anybody on student council. I do think it's a good idea to offer, maybe offer it or ask them to apply. Um, student body president, maybe senior class president, junior class president, or anyone on this student council, because obviously they're interested in student government. They're in, uh, interested in government. So, you know, on the student government, so this might be something that would interest them. Good place to start.
Yeah, well, and, and the thing I was going to remember that they were elected by
The students.
The students. So, you know, they've already been through that process of being elected to represent them. And this would just be one more thing and for them to, to do as their office, their office.
Well, I also know we just have to, depending on their schedules, if that, you know, I think if it's, we only limit it to the president and they have a commitment every, the third Thursday of the month. So it might be good to just present to Mr. Black's student leadership group to see, um, if there's any interest and maybe there's more than one and they can fill out the application and start there. And then we could try to have our, um, appointments made by the beginning of January so that they could take part in our reorganization meeting and kind of see, um, set our, our delegates for at least second semester that way.
Yeah, and I'm sorry I didn't get to talk to Megan from Centerville, but they did present at our Columbus conference last year, and I believe Centerville had three student reps and they spoke. And I, I just feel like, you know, I know we want to open it up to responsible students, but I feel like I want students on there that can help us understand the realities of high school students right now. I think that, you know, sometimes we can be far removed from that, um, even though we might have grandkids in high school. Just a thought.
Yeah, well, and, you know, lots of times the student body president isn't exactly, um, a straight A student and that kind of thing either, you know? The kids vote on them because they, first of all, they're popular, obviously. But they, they do want them to represent them because they feel like that person is the person that would, would best reflect what their thinking is, you know?
Um, usually have leadership skills. They've already demonstrated that. I, I like Anne's idea of having maybe three, and they could, uh, rotate through or at least then we would know, we would have one each time would be able to attend because they are busy there in other activities as well. Well, I've got a, I've drafted an application, so I'll share that with you all. And then if that's good, we'll get it to Mr. Black so that we can accept applications and hopefully get, um, some selected by the beginning of January because I know November is next week already.
That'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this might, might be a little unusual, but, um, are there any teachers out there that have any ideas, high school teachers? Anybody?
See us after the meeting. Yeah, let us know.
Okay. Don't be shy. Thank you. Okay, next, uh, we'll move on to the NVCTC representative, um.
Yeah, I mean, we're just still looking, I mean, uh, Mr. Walty at the, um, Dr. Walty at the NVCTC said they're not in a huge hurry. Um, so I think we've reached out to one, um, local business person. And, but if there's other names or anyone listening or watching or is here that's interested, um, just let us know. So I'm sure he'd like us to have someone by the end of the year, just as we talked about with the reorganizational meeting being in January. It'd be nice to have that wrapped up. So I believe they meet on the first, is it the second Tuesday of the month? I think it's the second Tuesday. They start at seven PM at the Miami Valley CTC. That's their commitment, so, for their board meetings.
Was there interest by that individual?
Um, I think they are gonna, um, he is going to touch base with Dr. Walty just to get a little bit more information just about, you know, the meetings and the responsibilities, you know, just like you all attend our graduation and different ceremonies like that. I think just to get an idea of kind of how their board operates. I think they're trying to touch base. They haven't yet, but they, they've at least both know, so. So we'll know on that front, I would say, within the week. But then if that doesn't pan out, we would want to get some other ideas for them as well.
Thanks.
And that's all under board discussion.
Our, um, I'm, I've never thought about this before. Are, um, teachers in our system, would they, would it be, uh, acceptable for them to be a representative since it's not sitting here? They would not be voting on anything directly?
I think they just want that business background, you know, some kind of, um, I think some kind of, um, background in a trade or something that they, um, offer at the CTC, they would be looking at in terms of specializing. They look for folks from the industry.
Yeah, well, I, I do know that there's, uh, we, we have several teachers that are in business for themselves. Um, you know, some of them are making a whole lot of monies. I know one in particular that sells cosmetics.
Yeah, I mean, I think you can reach out and you can get them in touch with, um, Dr. Walty and see if it's a good fit and if it feels like they'll, they would be able to represent and at least come, if not every month, pretty regularly to our board meetings so that we can get that update. I think that's the second piece of that. You know, obviously we want them to attend their board meeting first because we know that, um, Joe didn't attend every month if there was a conflict, but he was here on a regular basis.
Missed that. Good evening.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Okay. Any questions or anything for any of this stuff? It is recommended that the Board of Education approve meeting opening items A through G. Have a motion.
I move for the approval of the opening minute items, A, Alpha through G, Golf.
I second it.
First, Mr. Ambler, second, Mrs. Neese. Roll call, please.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Tovine?
Yes.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Okay, those items have been approved. Next, we'll move to the consent agenda. There are items A through J. Uh, A is approval of overnight extended student trips. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following overnight extended student trips. Um, Mike Burke High School cheerleading twenty twenty-four Nationals, Orlando, Florida. Kelly Wilber, Haley Pierce, Case Gang, Emma Savely, Laura Bates, Jenny Townsend, and Cheryl Wilbur. Item B, approval of out-of-state travel overnight student trips. And it is recommended the Board of Education approve the following out-of-state travel. MHS cheerleading twenty twenty-four Nationals, Orlando, Florida. Item C, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following organization and club, NVCTC, Future Farmers of America. Item D, approval of tuition-free senior enrollment. It's recommended by the superintendent and high school principal that the Board of Education approve Mary Ha- Howard for tuition-free enrollment for her senior year. Per, per board policy, J E C B, in compliance with state law and board policy, non-resident students are exempt from paying tuition when the student is under the age of twenty-two and his or her parents have moved from the district following the commencement of classes during the student's senior year only for the remainder of the school year and for one additional semester. Tuition-free senior enrollment does not extend to out-of-state. That is Dumar A. uh, Howard. Item E is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the following. October sixteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty-three is National School Bus Safety Week, and the theme was safely rolling to my destination. Item F is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following proclamation. Whereas public awareness is the key to effectively preventing drug abuse and to educating Ohio youth about the dangers of alcohol, tobacco, and drug abuse, and whereas preventing substance abuse within communities requires cooperation from workplaces, families, schools, and faith communities. Whereas this year's red ribbon celebration theme, Be Kind To Your Mind, Live Drug Free, is a reminder that everyday Americans across the country make significant daily contributions to their communities by being the best they can be because they live drug-free. And whereas Drug-Free Action Alliance urges all Ohioans to wear a red, a red ribbon, sign up for a drug-free Ohio and make a commitment to a healthy lifestyle. And whereas business media, social services, governments, schools, service organizations, religious institutions, school forces, and individuals will demonstrate their commitment to a drug-free lifestyle in wearing and displaying the red ribbons during this week-long celebration. Therefore, Miami'sburg City School District does hereby declare October twenty-third through October thirty-first as Red Ribbon Celebration Week. We hereby encourage all citizens to participate in the alcohol, tobacco, and other drug education and all related prevention activities, thus making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free lifestyle. Wow. And, uh, I will say, I, I love all those words. Um, you know, I think that there are, almost every family somewhere along the line has somebody that's addicted or, uh, you know, needs, needs, um, needs help, you know? And, um, hopefully the school, every school building that, that in our district will honor this and, and, um, you know, make stress it to their, to their kids, and I'm sure they will.
They're having spirit weeks this week, and I was actually at Medlar View today, and I did the announcements with their students. So, and tomorrow I'm going to remote from Bear. I'm going to be in one meeting, quickly jump out and help them with their announcements tomorrow. So they've been doing a nice job putting that out on their social media and their website. So a lot of fun events.
Awesome. That's good. Item G. Michael Black, principal of Miami Burke High School, has recommended that Colin Smith and Colton Thurman for early graduation pending satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements. Item H, superintendent and treasurer, CFO, recommend that the Board of Education approve the attached memorandum of understanding with the Teamsters Union nine fifty-seven. Steve, you want to comment or should I be going?
I can comment now. It's, it's to work through, um, vacation for one of our employees to have continuous vacation for his twenty-two years when there was a small gap in his, um, employment here. So.
Okay. Questions? Thank you, sir. Item I, it is recommended by the superintendent and elementary curriculum director, Amy Dobson, to approve the attached preschool promise memorandum of understanding.
This is an agreement that we've had for a number of years. It allows us to survey our incoming kindergarten families. And then in partnership, um, with the University of Data, they take our kindergarten readiness assessment and compare it back to, um, all of the preschool and early all of the preschool and early childhood providers in the community. And we get a lot of good data in terms of, um, which of our children, um, have access to preschool in the community and, um, allows us to continue to partner with our preschool providers in the, in Miami'sburg and, um, some even outside of the community, but primarily here in Miami'sburg.
Thank you. I think that's really cool. I think that, you know, we are, we are coming a long way with our, with our really young children, our like, young students. And a lot has been done in the last-
Three years, really?
A lot of it has been. So thank everybody for that, that's, uh, been working on that, cause it's, it's awesome. And I think it's gonna make a big difference in, um, where our students are at, even in the third grade.
And didn't that survey help us, uh, when it came to working on the initiative at Medlar View?
Yeah, you're exactly right. So we were able to use that data to target which families in our community were unable to access preschool services in, um, the district or in the community at large. And actually, now that we're the recipients of the Early Childhood Education Grant from O D E, we are able, um, I've been doing some work over the last week, just really digging into which children are eligible for that grant at our Medlar View site. And what, um, what I'm, what that, um, is revealing, what that analysis is showing is that we are actually targeting that group of children that we were intending to for early childhood services, um, so it's very exciting.
Thank you. It is exciting. Um, item J, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the consent items A through I. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of consent items A through I.
I second.
And first for Mr. Daffler, second for Mrs. Getter. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Tobine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Thank you. All those items have passed. Next, we'll go to section four, approval of enrollment programming. Following the Board of Education's special meeting work session held on October fifth, twenty twenty-three with the Elementary Enrollment Study Committee, the superintendent recommends approval of attendance boundaries and grade-banded building changes for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year as presented. Grade-banded buildings and expanded enrollment boundaries. Bauer K through two, Jane Chance three through five, including units for students with multiple disabilities. Medlar View K through two, including units for students with multiple disabilities, mound three through five. Bear K through two, Mark Twain K through two, Kinder three through five. The three district attendance areas are as follows. Medlar View mound boundary for the school year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. From Kinder, students who live in Lions Gate in the Miami'sburg at the mall. Bear and Kinder boundary for the school year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. From Kinder, students who live south of Central Avenue. Mark Twain, Kinder boundary for the school year twenty twenty-five. From Kinder, students who live in the north Central Avenue, north of Central Avenue. Okay. You want to discuss it any further?
I mean, we're happy, I, the committee's here. We have, um, committee members. They wanna raise their hands for all their hard work. We'll make you stand up, but I think they're all sitting over here. Steve, raise your hand.
Raise your hand if you're on the committee. Come on, let's see y'all. And thank you. I know there was a lot, a lot of time, uh, put into all this so that it would make, um, good sense to, to, to go on ahead and move forward with this. A lot of studying and visiting other schools and traveling, uh, even as far as Finley, I believe.
Yes.
Um, for, you know, for that, um, I believe, Ms., uh, Ms. Nice, wouldn't you? You was a little bit ill, didn't you get to make that trip, but all the rest of you were on, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ms., Ms. Getter was part of it. So there was a, you guys, did you raise your hand when I asked about raising your? Shame on you. Okay.
We'll still have to move some playground equipment around. I mean, I talked to Ginger, cause I had a question during that night of that meeting in regards to Kinder, uh, three to five, just of the size of the playground. And then I kinda asked her about, you know, K through two, and then she told me some of the concerns in regards to that, so I kinda understood that. But still looking at that playground, I'm, and then looking at other playgrounds of the size, um, would we have to move some equipment around to adjust that as far as? Cause some of the stuff you may have out there would be for younger kids, um, um, but Ginger helped, I mean, helped immensely in regards to answering some questions, so.
Mo- most of the equipment will be fine where it's at, because when we purchase it, we purchase it. So all ages are able to use it. And they did that starting multiple years ago when we did that, so.
Good. All right.
Okay. All right with that? Any other questions? Nope. Roll call.
Any motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I had done that already. I have a motion, please.
I make a motion, um, that we approve the enrollment programming proposed.
Second, please.
I second it.
We had a first from Ms. Getter, second from Mrs. Nice. Roll call.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Tobine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
No.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Okay. And that has passed. Section five, Human Resources Agenda Items. Approval of Personnel Reports, Certificated and Classified. Employment, employment in the Miami'sburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a B C I I and an F B I criminal record check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted board policies. Item B, is approval of personnel reports, both certificated and classified supplemental stipend. I'm not gonna read the, uh, whole employment, uh, requirements again. Item C. Is recommended by the superintendent that Nicole Thunderberg be awarded a two-year, two-hundred-and-sixty-one-day administrative contract with Miami'sburg City Schools effective November first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Nicole will assume the role of the Assistant Treasurer on the administrative salary schedule. Salary replacement administrative salary schedule filed G E B R one.
So Nicole's in the office, and she's been with the district for twenty-one years, and we're happy to have her move into this position.
And, uh, I, I think that, that, uh, Nicole will be fabulous. She'll be, do a wonderful job. She, uh, very personal and also very smart and very experienced, so. Pretty, pretty good combination of things that we need for that position, so. Good luck, Nicole. Item D, approval of Human Resources Items A through C. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the Human Resources Items A through C.
I move that the Board of Education approve Human Resources Items A through C.
Second? Second for Mr. Amsler, first for Mrs. Nice. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tobine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Those items have passed. Next, uh, section six, Agreements and Contracts. Item A, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following agreements and contracts as presented. Neola Incorporated, twenty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
I mean, this is a, I mean, we can all talk on it. Uh, it's a, a, um, board policy program. Um, O S B A offers it, Neola also offers it, but it's a whole package. So they come in, they do your updates, they do your legal reviews, they provide your regulations, they provide your forms, they keep up with the legislation. You get at least two annual updates a year. They also provide, um, something called the Administrative Guideline piece, which is a nice, um, kind of guide for administrators and schools, personnel when it comes to policy, how to make sure that we're implementing it. Right now with the O S B A model, um, anytime there's an update, it's on all of us. So Katie spends a lot of time with it, Steve does, all, all the financial items, Justin would do. Brenda spends a lot of time with it. Also, our legal department, um, they, every time we look at a new policy and ask, bring it to you, they have to review it to ensure that we're in compliance. Um, Neola does all that for us. So the first, this cost is for the first-
Three years.
Three years, and then after that, it's about three thousand, um, a year to renew. And it's just, they load everything into board docs. It's just a very, um, easy system to use, and it also just takes a lot off of multiple employees' plates, so.
O, O S B A does a really good job on a lot of things out there. They're very supportive of schools. One of the things that, they're probably not as strong, um, is the board policy. And a lot of times when we ask them about, like, the administrative guidelines and things like that, they're like, we need to contact legal. Well, it's like, well, we, we need somewhere to start, um, in terms of that. Both school districts in Ohio are with Neola. It has been something that we've talked about for the last several years, and, um, we need to, we need to update those, especially with all the changes in the federal laws coming up, so.
Yeah, I know they've talked about that at the Capitol Conference, Neola.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
Yeah, so in terms of legal, their legal sends everything to us. When it's ready to go, they send us the notes, when it has, so it's already gone through that whole process. So we're not, not only now are we paying for O S B A, but then we have to pay for legal to go through it. We have to do the revision, and it's gotta go back to legal, so.
So the number looks big, but, you know, time, everybody else's time, there's, you know, there's a value to that.
Yes.
It's ultimately going to save some money.
Exactly.
The number looks big, but overall, overall, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a, a good savings, so.
Exactly.
Time, time is valuable, so.
Just legal costs.
Even with the legal cost, yeah.
Yeah.
Alone, that's, if it, if it's close to a wash, it looks good to me.
And they, they meet, they come to us at least twice a year, and we sit down with them and make sure if we have questions, things to go over, if there is a special session of the legislature or new things, they take care of that for us and say, hey, you've gotta get this on your next board agenda. So it really is a full-service, um, benefit to the district. And yeah, I think over time, it's definitely gonna be worth the investment.
Yeah. Ain, ain and I talked about that today for probably ten or fifteen minutes about, you know, the, the policies and stuff, uh, that, like you just said, Steve, but, yeah, there's a, a lot of changes that are coming down the pike here, I think, with the, just, just. I don't know, it's gonna be a, it'll be tough to keep up with everything, that's for sure.
This'll help, for sure.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a good, uh, good, good deal right there. Okay, that was six. Uh, roll call. Motion, please, I'm sorry.
I make a motion that the Board of Ed- Education approve the following agreement with Neola as presented.
Second.
Okay, we had a first for Mrs. Getter, second for Mr. Amsler. Now a roll call?
It was Cory.
Cory Daffler, okay. Cory. All right.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Tobine?
Yes. At least I got the last part right. All right, on section seven is Financial Agenda Items. Item A, Authorization For Amendment To The Appropriations And Certificate Of Estimated Resources. Is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. Um, amended the official certificate of estimated resources and the appropriation of resolution.
Uh, and this is just monthly. This is what we're bringing in, this is what we intend to spend, this is how we intend to spend it.
Thank you. And how's that looking?
Pretty good.
Pretty good? Okay, thank you. Item B, is the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four slash zero one eight and two hundred fund budget purpose statements. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the fiscal year twenty-four, zero one eight and two hundred budget and purposes statements as presented.
And these are a couple more, we've been approving these as they, as they've come in, a couple more student organizations, um, well, you know, what they think they're gonna bring in and what they intend to spend.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you're getting worn out tonight, aren't you? I like that.
That's good. All that good practice.
Right.
Item C, it's approval of purchase orders and then and now invoices. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the filing purchase orders and then and now invoices as presented. Pipestone Golf Club, eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty cents. Livo Energy Solutions, forty-six thousand dollars, forty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Quaver Incorporated for electronic tech, textbooks, thirty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Bauer Security Equipment through C D W L L C, twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty cents. M M S, the middle school security equipment, thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. Miami'sburg High School Security Equipment, twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-one cents, all from the same company. If you want. Okay. Next is the approval for the resolution to establish fund. The Treasurer CFO recommends that the Board of Education approve the following resolution to establish a fund for the Future Farmers of America.
So it's just necessary that the Board approve that we set up a fund in order for us to spend for them?
Can I ask you a question, Justin?
Yes, ma'am.
So I saw on there that they already have some funds, it said from sales. What would that be? Do you know what that is?
Um, I don't know what, it's probably anticipated, I don't know.
I haven't. Uh, the F F A group, if you notice, it's gonna be all over this agenda. It is part of our new agriculture program that we brought in from the Miami Valley C T C. And part of the requirement is they have to participate in the F F A. So in the future, they're gonna have a lot of fundraisers to help fund their activities, their events. Actually, some of them are going to the national convention next week. We've already approved that trip. So they had to establish their group, which you did earlier. Now they gotta have this fund. They are doing a fundraiser of fruit sales, so they do have some funds coming in already from that fundraiser. Um, the C T C also seeded money for the program of fifteen hundred dollars. And you will also see down here, um, under donations, that the Miami'sburg Schools Education Foundation, as part of the Dempsey Education Award, is giving them three thousand dollars also to help fund the convention. Hopefully, the fundraisers will be enough to help them continue, but with a new program, it was tough. Yep.
Thanks, Justin.
You're welcome.
Item E, approval of transfers. The Treasurer CFO recommends the Board of Education approve the following transfer from five ninety-nine slash ninety-nine twenty-three to five ninety-nine slash ninety-nine twenty-four. The amount is eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and sixteen cents. Better have a good explanation for that one, buddy.
So this is, uh, the safety grant money that came in last year. So for accounting purposes, we need to move it from, what was the twenty-twenty-three fiscal year fund that it was sitting in, into the twenty-four fund. And so that's what this does. We, I can't do anything at a fund level without board approval. So that's why you see these come up from time to time.
And three of those purchase orders, that one, the last one, over twenty-five thousand, that's part of our safety and security grant to, um, replace a lot of our cameras that were original. were original, um, better technology, um, better camera angles, all those things. So those, those three that you saw on there are all coming from the money that goes into that account this year, so.
Is there a time limit on, on expenditure of that money?
It has to be, um, at least encumbered or spent by September of twenty-four, so. We're making some nice dents in it, so. I've been working out the last two weeks. And then we also did, just for information, we did apply for another BWC grant with Wybel, um, to get CO2, um, sensors in the high school. So that was about a, a fourteen, almost fifteen thousand dollar grant that we received from them, so.
Wow.
Where would those be placed, then?
Up in the air handlers.
Okay, okay, great.
Item F, is approval of financial items A through E. I have a motion.
I move for the approval of financial items A through E.
I second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Tobine?
Yes.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Items of past. Section eight, acceptance of donations. Is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's zero-one-eight account unless indicated otherwise. Three thousand dollars from the Minnesburg Schools Education Foundation, Dempsey Education Award Fund, to Minnesburg High School Agriculture Program. Twenty-six hundred dollars from the Minnesburg Schools Education Foundation, Dempsey Education Award Fund to support Minnesburg Middle School Career Expedition Activities. One thousand dollars- Sorry?
Say that three times fast.
No, no, I could even say it slow. Thousand dollars to Minnesburg City Schools for K through two, science from Mary and Randall Nises?
Nises.
Nises, I'm sorry, you're right.
That's okay.
I think I'm just used to saying Nice. And, uh, the Viva Harriman Fund. Hundred and fifty dollars to Minnesburg City Schools for outstanding lunch charges from Kathy's Berry. Seventy-five hundred dollars to Minnesburg City Schools for Martian Band Staff Stipends for Minnesburg High School Band Boosters, from the boosters. Viking Valhalla donations in memory of Joey Zakovich. Seventy-five dollars from Anonymous, one hundred dollars from Sharon Angel, two hundred dollars from Brian Di Matteo, two hundred and fifty dollars from Tom and Chris Jeans and Family, three hundred and fifty dollars from Timmy's, pronounce that one again, I can never say it.
I don't know.
You don't know?
Sorcelli.
Sorcelli, Sorcelli, isn't it? It's kind of Italian. Hundred dollars from Greg and Barb Whitehead, and fifty dollars from Talia Woodall. I would just like to say thank you, Board, uh, from, for their generosity of everybody, and, um, Stacy, how is the, uh, the funds going for the foundation?
Our foundation funds are great. We are about two point four million in our funds with forty-five funds total, so, um, the goal is to get to three million. Pat Ward did the first million, Marsha did the second million, my goal is to do the third million and I'm turning it over. Um, but, so, we are always looking to build scholarships. The, uh, foundation did start a scholarship in memory of Joe, and the criteria, and then, so we seeded the money for the first few years for that. The criteria is a student needed to be a Miami'sburg High School and CTC student for two years and show leadership and community service, so that'll be a new scholarship this year. So, and the Dempsey Education Award Fund, we hadn't given in a few years, so we decided it was time to support the agricultural program. And then what Bob talked about is our bigger and better career day for the seventh graders this year.
Okay. Now, just out of curiosity, what was the amount for Joe's, um, scholarship?
It is a thousand dollars a year. One year. Because right now, we didn't have, and once we get the funds, because we were only able to seed five thousand dollars, so if you did that, we'd only be able to do one year if we did a renewable, so just to start it, we did one year. If we can build those funds up through donations, we can always adjust the scholarship.
Awesome. Yeah, that's, that's a good scholarship right there.
Joe certainly deserves that honor.
Motion.
I move for the acceptance of donations.
Second.
First for Mr. Ambler, second for Mrs. Ne, uh, Mrs. Gettler. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Tobine?
Yes.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Okay, and all those items of past, and thank you so much, everyone, for the donations and the applications and some of the funds we already have and all that stuff. It's, uh, it's, it's a good move, Stacy, thank you. Legislative liaison, Cory Daffler.
There's not a bunch of educational stuff going on in the, in the State House right now, a bunch of, there's some committees, uh, had a few things, but not a ton. I guess the really big thing would be on the federal side, we finally got the People's House open, you know? So, other than that, there's not much, uh, legislation going on. Vote, vote next, uh, not next Thursday, Tuesday, Tuesday after the seventh, so, that's all I got.
Thank you. Student achievement liaison, Mr. Chris Ambler, and Chris would like to do the, uh, full, congratulations, favorite news, district news.
I'll do the rest of it.
Yeah, do all of it.
Wonderful. Uh, if I, ladies, if I say a name wrong of one of your students, and Dale, if I say a name wrong of one of your students, I apologize. Have you given me some good ones this month? So, um, other student of the month representatives include from Bauer Elementary School, Shinuja Kanon Kumar, Bear Elementary School, Stark Stafford, Jane Chance Elementary, uh, Ellie Wozel, Kinder Elementary School, uh, Larisse Mubin, uh, Mark Twain Elementary School, Tiffany Mendoza, uh, Medlar View Elementary School, Colton Hunter, Mound Elementary School, Annie Alward, and Miami'sburg Middle School, Landon Hamilton. So congratulations to all those students of the month. The boys and girls, uh, girl, boys and girls cross-country team will compete in the regional championships held in Troy this weekend. The girls' race will begin at two PM. The top ti, five teams and top twenty individuals will call, qualify for the state championships. The boys' race will begin at two forty-five, the top six teams and the top twenty-four individuals will also qualify for the state championships. Good luck to both teams. The Miami'sburg varsity competition and game day teams finished a clean sweep at Edgewood Cougar Cheer Championships. The game day team also walked away with the grand champion trophy for the highest score of all game day performances. So congratulations to the cheerleading squad as well. And that's all I've got.
Mrs. Nice?
No meeting this month.
Okay. Did the news. Okay.
Roundtable?
Okay, that's, uh, Board of Ed, Education and, or staff comments. Uh, I will touch on, uh, Mr. Newbauer's presentation. Um, all those items are near and dear to me. I, uh, like the fact that kids get exposure to all kinds of trades, um, all that, that's good, you know? Kid might go there, see something, realize maybe college is better, or, or whatever. I just, I think all those exposures are very good. College is not for everybody, and, uh, you can make a lot of money in this world if you use your hands, so that is all, that is all great stuff. I like fifth graders going there, that's awesome. So my, I have an eighth grade son that will be going there. Uh, I hope that he finds something he likes, so. Um, and then I'd touch on National Bus Safety Week, I think a couple meetings ago, uh, the Ohio Legislature, Dewine, created a bus safety committee for that crash that happened in, Troy, a few months back. But when I was doing my research on that, less than one percent of auto accidents involve buses in the state of Ohio. They are typically a very safe, um, transportation. I mean, that's a hard job, they're always, uh, distracted, looking in the, looking in the back, making sure everybody's good, so thank you to all bus drivers and, and keeping our kids safe. And then, uh, I got goosebumps for, for Joe Izakovich's foundation, that is a, that's a great thing there. So, congrats to all the other te, all the teams that are, uh, moving on.
You've pretty much hit everything I was going to say. I too would like to say, Bob, um, thanks, that was a great presentation. Uh, as much as Joe has meant to us and what you're doing for students, uh, you're right. Um, I know of two students that tried to get into CTC and was unable to because of grades, because they went and it just wasn't there, and the competition is much stiffer, even though that they have a bigger facility. So I think opening it up to the fifth grade and, and getting that new experience is fabulous. I like the internships, um, that's music to my heart, so thank you. I know you work diligently with those kids up there and you do a fantastic job, so, so thank you for that. Uh, the scholarship on Joe Izakovich, I couldn't be happier. Um, while deserving, he meant a lot to us, and you just don't realize what somebody means to you personally or professionally, uh, until they're gone, and, and I think it's hit us all in different ways. Um, but every time we come in this room, I think that it hurts, so. With that, I'll say, uh, good luck this weekend. I know the football team plays up in Columbus, I believe, or in that area. So good luck to them, um, and, um, you know, have a safe Halloween. I won't say holiday, just Halloween, because we'll be back before then, so, um, I'll move it on.
I'm excited for all of the students that were chosen to be the students of the month, that's quite an honor. Um, I'm very excited about the CAP program. I grew up in a family, uh, of contractors, and so I, I always say I love to hear a saw and I love to smell wood, wood that's been sawed. So, uh, yes, I'm excited because there are so many students that are looking for something, they know that college is not in their future, but they know that they're smart and they can have a career in the trades if they look into this program, I think it's awesome. And then I want to thank all the bus drivers who transport our students every day to and from school and to extracurricular activities, that's a huge responsibility, and I appreciate them very much.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say thanks to our school psychologist. Um, you know, their observations and evaluations that they do with children really help give our parents some answers for their children, and, um, it helps guide them to success. So we're, you know, really fortunate to have some really good school psychologists in our district, um, to answer, you know, what, what, what's causing these difficulties that some of the children have. It's, it's a godsend for our, our parents and for the children. Um, I just wanted to thank everyone on the enrollment study committee. Um, I know they worked for a good seven months. Um, I think the numerous pluses of the great banding for the parents, for the, for the families, the staff, and the students are going to be exciting for our district. That's all I wanted to say.
Well, I'd just like to say that I really like the Future Farmers of America Club, um, where students joining that, that's a, um, that's been around a long time, and it's, uh, it's just proven that there's a lot of kids that come out of there going to horticulture and, uh, all, all kinds of things with farms. Uh, there, people had no, I, I didn't have any idea until I really started studying all the things about, you know, all the nursery plants and all, just on and on and on, uh, but anyway, that's what the F, F, FFA does. Um, and it also, um, kind of leads into 4H a lot, too, a lot, lot of there. CAP program, that's great. Um, I, I know that we'll get some really, um, good student representatives to, you know, to come forth and work with us, uh, as a, as a group. And of course, we all miss Joe.
I don't have anything else to report.
Well, I'm, I'm glad, um, Mr. Newbauer's able to attend this evening, because in your folders, you have our Business Advisory Council Annual Report and Plan and Actions that we're going to be working on, um, throughout the next year, so that was submitted, we have to submit that yearly to the state. Um, so exciting that, and I, I was just at a conference, Pathways to Prosperity, and we are putting it on the map nationally with our pathways that we have created with the innovation of getting career awareness, whether it be a trade, college, a profession, the military, um, to our students at a younger and younger age. So, um, I don't know if anyone else is sending fifth grade to the CTC as a whole district, so that's exciting, a new thing, we're, we're always looking, um, to expand. So it's, um, it's exciting, and, um, I think as we talked about with board policy, our world is changing, and in ten years, there's jobs out there that don't exist now. And so I think that us recognizing third graders and fifth graders, you know, they're, they're going to be our future workforce, so it's very exciting. So, um, I just, kudos to what everyone does, I know Stacy and Bob work very hard, um, on that for our district, and, and we are, we are represented nationally for the things that we do here in Miami'sburg, so that's very exciting. And then I also wanted to remind you in your folders, um, as we talked about the end of the year coming, um, the annual board training that the ESC puts on is coming up in February, so I kind of gave you a save the date. Um, it's, it's for returning, um, board members as well as the new board members, so, um, just we'll be reminding you to, and we'll get, get registered and get that board approved, um, in the next month or so, so it'll be here before we know it. And then, um, National Night Out was held by our Miami'sburg, um, City Police Department and, um, uh, our Athletic Department, um, Mr. Osborne, um, helped me put together a basket that was raffled off that evening, and we received a very nice thank you note from, um, Chief Sedlack about our donation and just thanking us for our generosity and our support of the National Night Out, so I wanted to share that with everyone, they appreciate that. Um, and then, um, good luck to all the sports teams, I know we have some competitions, excited about our cross-country, hope we have a lot of runners making it as a team and go to state next weekend, that's very exciting. Um, and just, you know, I want to thank all of the board and all of the enrollment study committee, I feel like we, we are working for the here, we're working for the near, and we're also working for the far away. So I feel like tonight, we were able to make some, some decisions that'll help not only what's happening now and here, but also near and far away, so I'm excited for those changes, and we'll be communicating often and, um, a lot about the things to come in the next few months as we plan for the start of next year, so it's exciting, so thank you.
I'm just going to say ditto to what everyone has said here this evening, um, but I also like to, um, put a plug in, once again, for, we are always looking for subs out in the district and, and all classifications, um, and then also too, we did talk about, um, National School Bus Safety Week, um, our drivers do a great job, Michelle does a great job, um, in terms of all of that. And then this year, we also, um, did open up a new category for van drivers, so if the big yellow bus is too intimidating for you, we have a smaller little white vehicles that we can train you- little white vehicles that we can train you as well, so, um, if you're interested in doing that in any sub, we'd love to have you come out and help us, it's, it's a great, be on the same schedule as your kids, um, going at the same time, get off at the same time, so, and then, uh, good luck to all the, uh, sports, fine arts, van and guard, um, as they wrap up, um, their season's coming up, so.
Ladies?
I do want to remind everybody of November seventh, um, more information's coming out, more details, but November seventh is Election Day, and they use our building for a polling place, so it's a personalized learning day for students, students will give an opportunity, um, to complete some activities at home, some wonderful learning opportunities and different, um, experiences, and it is a professional development day for teachers.
Could be a workplace, too, they could experience.
They can experience a workplace, there's, it align, their activities all align with our vision of a Viking, so.
And that's just for the high school? It's the whole district?
District one, yeah.
Pre-K.
We'll be sending some information out very soon about their choice boards and information, just trying to get it all finalized.
Mrs. Lucas or Mrs. Dobson, you have anything? Thank you, I, I, uh, should have included you in the, uh, list of thank yous for the tremendous amount of time that you spent, uh, working on the, uh, elementary enrollment, thank you. Okay, uh, next is public comments, we have no green sheets, uh, and there again, um, well, we have one waiving back there, but I don't think that I can, I apologize, um, but, you know. At this time, um, we will be going into executive session and, um, to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official to conduct the, it is actually to conduct the annual evaluation of our superintendent. So there will be, uh, no, uh, voting or anything taking place, uh, when we come out of session, will be adjourned, uh, when we come out of session, so, thank you for being here. Can I have any motion to go into executive session?
I move that we move go to executive session. I second it.
Okay, we have a first from Mrs. Gettler, second from Mrs. Nice, we are in executive session at seven thirty-one.